Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call this meeting the Sioux Falls Planning Commission to Order. I'd like to emphasize a couple of items. Out of courtesy for all, please silence all electronic devices. We look forward to hearing your testimony and tonight, and appreciate you joining us. In an effort to have sufficient time to hear from all audience members, we ask that when you come to the podium, please step up all the way to the ribbon up here and state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes because we want to be sure we can hear everyone speak tonight. This time, we will consider the regular agenda. Please read the item. We do have a quorum.
Do you do the regular agenda approval first?
Right. We have to know what the item is.
Okay. Item 2A, Petition CU-01198020, Conditional Use Permit to Allow a Car Wash Within 250 Feet of a DD Form Located at 1500 South Minnesota Avenue.
Good evening. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by the Silver Star Car Wash.
Jason, we need to approve the agenda first, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda of a single item.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second, Lukey.
It's been moved in second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries. Go ahead, Jason.
Sorry about that. As I indicated, this is an application by the Silver Star Car Wash. They're looking at proposing to convert the old Vern ID building on the southeast corner of Minnesota and West 23rd Street into a Silver Star Car Wash. The east portion of the building, they will utilize as their corporate office. The center portion will be a Silver Star's car wash tunnel, and then the western portion will be their kind of training area for their employees. As we know, South Minnesota Avenue is classified as a limited access arterial street. We did have, this application was deferred from the main meeting. There were some concerns by neighbors with sound, landscaping, traffic, those kind of things. They did provide an updated site plan, as you can see here, indicating some proposed landscaping along that east property line adjacent to the single-family residential uses. They also provided us with some renderings. This would be looking at the Silver Star Car Wash entrance from the north, looking south. And then this would be coming on the south side out, the cars that would be coming out of the car wash. And this access point right here is the one on Minnesota Avenue. You can see, one of the concerns was the noise coming from their vacuum system. That's all a centralized vacuum system, so every, all the noise is made from this red canister here. They have proposed to provide an MCU wall to kind of screen that, and then that will push all, most of the sound out to Minnesota Avenue instead of going back to the east to the single-family residential, uh, single-family residential homes to the east. The proposed car wash does meet the comprehensive plan. This is an existing commercial corridor with lots of retail uses fronted South Minnesota Avenue. The applicant is not planning on modifying the building. All of their work is going to be interior work. Further, the car wash and vacuums, they're locating as far as they can adjacent to Minnesota Avenue, so hopefully that will mitigate some of the sound coming out of there. Finally, they are looking to place that screen fence along the east property line with some additional landscaping that should help buffer the sound from those existing single-family residential homes. Because the application has to provide clarity on the proposed use nature and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval with a conditional use permit with the following conditions: to provide a minimum of a six-foot-high screen fence along the east property line, and then taper down to a four-foot fence, a minimum of 20 feet from the south property line along West 25th Street. The reason for that is there is a house that fronts 25th Street in Dakota, and it becomes difficult to see if you've got a six-foot-high fence along there. So the homeowner there did request to have that kind of tapered down to four foot, so it's a little bit easier to see around there, which seems pretty reasonable. Provide the landscaping as indicated on this landscape plan. And then I did forget one of the conditions, and that was the vacuums need to be a minimum of 45 feet from that east property line, and that should help to funnel that sound west to South Minnesota Avenue. There were some requests from the neighbors about hours of operation. Staff isn't necessarily opposed to those. I know the applicant said they run eight to eight in the summer and eight to seven in the winter, so trying to find what are winter and what are summer would be the only difficult things on our part. There were some other conditions that they requested. I gave you guys their printouts, emails with some of the responses by the applicant and some of the things that the neighborhood would like to see. Those, they can absolutely ask for, the neighbors, and I indicated that to them. So with that being said, I'm here to answer any questions. And we also did, lucky enough, to have a representative from the Health Department here. If you guys have any questions on really the sound ordinance as it pertains to the Health Department and the city's requirements, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Any questions from the commission? Seeing none. Thank you. Is the applicant here this evening?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Wade Beam. I'm with HEG Construction, and I'll be speaking on behalf of the applicant this evening, 1300 West 57th Street. So thanks for coming out on a Monday night. I appreciate that. I appreciate you, you know, making the time for us. So as Jason said, you did a pretty good job at recapping kind of where we've been and coming back from the deferral, second deferral, and, you know, so what have we been doing since then? So I would say we've been doing a lot of homework, and, you know, so I do have a, kind of a cast of characters here along with me today that can help us to add some color to some of the things that we've done since then. So along with me tonight, that will take some time to stop up and introduce themselves during the public testimony portion. Brad Dietzenbaugh with Van de Wall Architects will talk about some of the context, some of the planning for the building, architectural side of this thing. Chris Johnson is actually joining us by phone. He is our sound consultant. Chris is with Johnson Environmental, and he provided the sound study that I think you've all been able to read. Josh Ketchum will be stopping up, too. He's with Norman Engineering. Josh will be speaking to the site design and the landscape plan, and, you know, anything else site-related that you might have questions on. Dan Mouchknaus is the electrical engineer, professional design engineers. Dan came out and actually did a photometric study, light study, light trespass study for us. So again, kind of a key zoning item, so if there's questions about that, we can get Dan up to add some color to that. We do have a representation from the Silver Star Ownership Group. Should there be any operational questions, anything that we can address there? And, you know, just kind of how they operate and, you know, anything else we might want to add there. As Jason said, Health Department is here. I see Dominic Miller in the crowd. We did have the opportunity to meet with Dominic onsite several weeks ago to kind of discuss some of the strategy, some of the enforcement, some of the different things that go into uses like ours and how we could improve our design and take into consideration, you know, being harmonious with the neighborhood. So that was a fruitful meeting, and that Chris Johnson, who we'll get a chance to talk here in a little bit, you know, was also there and based some of his sound study on some of those findings. And then, yeah. That's pretty much the group that we'll have along with us tonight. We did host a neighborhood meeting onsite a week ago, last Thursday. We did have, you know, we did do the whole certified mailing, you know, tracked receipts, everything for deliverable, delivery, everything, so, you know, we had some, we had good penetration on the notification. We had seven neighbors show up, you know, took some, you know, had some good conversation about things that we're doing. Were able to present the perspectives that you're seeing here tonight. We have had discussions with several neighbors since then that resulted in some of the written conditions that we were able to present and kind of pre-agree to. And, you know, so those will come up again. I won't repeat those here for you right now. One thing, I do want to make a correction. What Jason referenced, 45-foot on the, for the setback for the vacuums, it is actually 47-foot as the drawing shows, so, well, that is in the written conditions. It's correct at that point. So it's kind of where we're at. If there are any questions that I can field for you while I'm standing here, I'll be happy to do that. Otherwise.
Any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Wade, would you, and perhaps Tom as well, comment on how you will be or what your plan is for implementing the recommendations contained in their report?
In the sound study?
Correct.
Would it be okay if we answered that after Chris had a chance to present? Because I think a lot of that information will be contained in his commentary.
Sure.
Okay, good.
Other commission questions? Seeing none. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Brad Dietzenbaugh, principal partner at Van de Wall Architects.
Come forward just a little bit if you could.
South Phillips Avenue, Sioux Falls. I'll be the design project manager and overseeing the construction process of it. I'm just going to give you a few brief information on the building code, what we're doing with the building. As was stated before, the exterior of the building really isn't going to change. It's still going to look the same it is. We're going to add the signage, of course, for the new use. We're going to be adding a tunnel exit on the south side of the building that's centered in the building, of course. And most of the work is going to be taking place inside the building for remodeling the office use and constructing the tunnel down the center of the building. Just some code information. The previous business or the previous use of the building was a business type, Group B with an S1. With the new use of the building, it's still going to remain the same, a Group B business with S1 for general storage as well. And underneath the type of construction, the building was built as a 2B construction, non-combustible, fully sprinklered. By building code standards, you would be allowed to have 69,000-square-foot building underneath that construction type. Currently, the building's only 23,862 square feet. And of that 23,862 square feet, 22% of that, which is 5,342 square feet, is the actual wash tunnel and the equipment rooms for that wash tunnel. The remainder of 18,000-plus square feet is support and office use, which is nestled on each side of the tunnel itself. There will be access to the tunnel on the north side, like we discussed. We plan on utilizing the existing hard surface along Minnesota Avenue to provide ample stacking for the vehicles to enter, and that's about it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Any questions from the commission? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Chris Johnson. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. My address is 629 South Minnesota, Johnson Environmental is located at. I was hired about a month ago to do a sound study, and what we did is we studied three different other car washes to get our baseline numbers and then include them on a future proposal of the plan that you see there. The ones that we studied were 12 on Paul Street, Louise, and one on 26th Street. The numbers are all pretty much the same. What one finding, one finding that really stuck out to us was the actual, the decibels were lower than the city L90 standard. What we did find is the traffic on the street was much higher decibel rate. That was one of the areas that we ran into problems, saying, what is the actual of just this part of it? You see a lot of spikes on our study sheets that spiked up higher than the 60. What we did with is the L90 is a 50-yard radius. As you get further away from the noise producer, the wavelength lengthens and become quieter to the ear. Some of the things that we measured, or some of the approaches that we took with this is the sound mitigation, some of the ideas. The typical one, the biggest problem we've seen at the current lot on Minnesota is the open parking lot that's basically a half a block long and exposing the rear of the home, the existing homes. The fence that's there currently is below grade of the curb, and so it's actually, I would say, it's six feet tall. That's why I used seven foot in my recommendations, is try to get it up tall as we can above the existing curb on the east side of that parking lot area. A solid fence, the fence that's currently there is actually, has linear holes, which lets the Minnesota sound traffic come right through. With changing up that fence to a more acoustical style diminishing fence, what we're able to do is diminish the noise from Minnesota and keep our noise under, at that fence line. The elevation is also a very important part that we talked about with the owners. The lower we can get, the part that makes the noise essentially, the better it is because we can stop it with fences and trees, and it doesn't come over the top of the fences, is what I should say. The vacuum producers, we did look at at all three locations. At one location, there was a fence, it's just a, there's a chain link fence, six-foot tall, with kind of a privacy plastic in it, and just that little bit of a fence diminished it by 10 decibels, which is under 50, we found, so it'd be much, substantially under what we were looking for, needing, especially with the distance. If we do a CMU wall, it should knock it down considerably more. The building design, something that we talked about also with the owners as far as the placement of the fans inside, the elevation of the fans inside, to how it relates to the tunnel on the outside exposure. That can play different parts, and there's also availability to do substantial noise reduction in that area of the car wash, the sound panels, different ways we can buffer the sound and hold it and absorb it inside the tunnel rather than having it escape. Trees would be another factor that we're looking at. Typically, we'd want it evergreen style. If there was a tree there, the, but we're only looking at a savings of maybe two to three decibels, so that'd be the lowest hanging fruit, but also the least factor in there. The building facade, one thing that I wanted to mention is, you know, they can deflect noise also across the parking lots and around. This is where we've talked about putting up some vertical barriers that are adjustable or movable on the outside to defer some of that sound right at the end of the tunnel. That's a possibility. So basically, what I want to do is give you a long laundry list of different options that were possible, some of the better, most efficient ones, cost-effective ones, and some that are just the common basic ones that we always see. Is there any questions for me currently at all?
Any questions from the commission? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Josh Ketchum. We're with Norman Engineering, the civil engineer and landscape consultant on the project. Our address is 3800 West 53rd Street. Just wanted to discuss a few of the civil-related changes that have taken place since the last meeting. As discussed by Chris, the fence that's going to be installed along the east portion of the property be installed along the entire portion of the east property line, acoustical style fence, six-foot minimum height, which will be measured from the final grades that we set, not the existing grades that are out there today. The understanding is that's below the curb height now, so it's not truly a six-foot fence. Bring that up to a full six feet. There are portion, a couple portions of the site, as mentioned earlier, where that fence height will be different. One in particular is at the vacated right-of-way that runs through the middle of the site at 24th Street. There is an existing drainage swale and drainage easement that runs through that portion of the site. So to make sure that we have got good continuity along that fence and we're maintaining an adequate screening height for sound and for visual purposes, that height will be extended to a seven-foot-tall fence at that location. And then on the southern portion of the site along West 25th Street, the fence will be reduced to a four-foot-tall fence, as discussed earlier, so. And then with regard to some additional screening measures, we've proposed some additional trees along the east property line. The current site plan shows an additional 20 trees. That's in addition to the existing trees that are currently shown on the site plan, which meet the current landscape requirements for the city of Sioux Falls today. And so the location and type of trees that we show, coordinated that information with Excel and IG Communications to comply with their recommendations for tree heights so that as those trees grow and develop, we're not impeding their existing infrastructure that's onsite today. So those trees will work with the overhead power lines and some of the other infrastructure that they have in place. And then the other measure that's shown on here are the seasonal speed bumps for traffic calming in and out of the site, as well as site circulation, making sure that vehicles aren't able to get up to high rates of speeds within the site, not only to protect customers and employees of Silver Star, but also residents of the neighborhood, making sure that traffic speeds in and out of the development are slowed down and calm, and people are active drivers as they enter and egress from the development. And those speed bumps are a standard practice that are installed on all Silver Star car washes. They have them on all their existing facilities in town, so very safety-oriented methodology there, something that they do on all their sites. And then with regard to vehicle circulation, it's my understanding that the city traffic engineer had had a previous discussion with the board and answered some of your questions, and I am able to answer any further questions you might have with site circulation or any of the topics that I've mentioned here before.
Any questions from the commission?
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dan Mouchknaus. I'm with Professional Design Engineers, 48371, 265th Street, Brandon.
Now step forward just, there you go.
Okay, thank you. Electrical engineer, Wade and I went onsite a few weeks back in the evening and did a light survey and with, took some foot handle measurements and looked at the existing lighting, where we maybe could improve the conditions and where maybe there were some deficiencies, and also maybe a few violations and whatnot. We laid out a proposed new site plan showing that we can comply with the ordinance of three foot candles at the property line, and that's basically about what we were looking at. We would have fixtures that are the full, comply with the full cutoff so that we do not have any light, we minimize as much of the light trespass as possible. Pretty straightforward.
Any questions from the commission? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wade Beam again, so that pretty much concludes the consultants that we have to put in front of you. If there's any other petition or related questions, I can field those or we can move on to public.
Okay, that works. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Yes. You're one of the audience, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm Jeff Mettoma. I live at 1511 South Dakota Avenue, just straight behind the proposed car wash. Along, just to, first, thank you again for tabling it from last time to give us some time to do some research. I'm a little blindsided tonight. I just got this flyer in my door two hours, less than two hours ago, and I quick drove out to 85th Street, Silver Star, to double-check some of my facts here. You know, again, I said at the first meeting, I think this could be a great business next to ours. I really do. I just, my trepidation is no one yet, and maybe you guys have the answer, but the public doesn't, has told me what the decibels are 100 feet, 200 feet, 300 feet away from the car wash, either north, southeast, or west. I mean, that's just a simple answer, and it seems like if I can't get that, it creates some suspicion on my part as a citizen. I heard one of the persons testify that they notified about a citizens' meeting a week ago. I'm right behind there. My neighbor is next door. I'd like to see the tracking. I didn't get it. I was not there, and I would love to have been reassured of some of these things. Because as I said, I'll go with the positives. I've visited Silver Star three times since the last meeting, and I have to say, it's a Sioux Falls gem of a business. It is run professionally. I mean, I would be proud to be next to a business like that, however, I'm a homeowner. That's my one concern, right? But what a business. I got to tell you, I have homes in Scottsdale, Minneapolis, and here, and I haven't seen much better-run businesses, neat, clean. I drove through and I asked the young lady taking my money, how many people do you get a day? What's a good day? And she said, a good day would be 125 to 150, and I'm sure they have a business plan that says that. I don't know that. But I do know, when I studied buying this home, and I really looked it over, I wanted to buy the home because it was behind a car dealership, because it was perfect. I had no neighbors looking in on me. I have a six-foot fence. I put in $30,000 worth of 14-foot-high evergreens in the back of my yard two, three years ago, and I bought the place. So it's a little serene piece of paradise, quite frankly. The business closes at 5:00. I can sit out with a glass of wine. I can hear my neighbor's kids play in the yard. It's phenomenal. It's a great historic district. In fact, when I have people visit, one of the things they say about McKinnon Park and Historic District in general is, what a gem. It's as nice as any city on this planet, and given what's going on in some of the cities, I'd say nicer. So again, I think the business is fine. I just want simple answers. It'll make me feel better as a citizen. I'll just paint one picture. If we don't get those answers, though, you're a commission. You have a vision for this city. I think, I'll use a phrase my good friend said, I feel like we've won the lottery to be born here. I think a super lottery to be born in South Dakota, and then to be in Sioux Falls that has historic districts with parks, that you go out at night in our district and you'd see young families, I'm an old guy, but there's young people moving in, not only improving or keeping the homes, but they're improving these homes. They look beautiful. It's fantastic. And when I get guests and out-of-town visitors, they rave about the area. So if we're sitting out there, if, and I hope this isn't the case if we hear this, if I'm sitting out there at 5:00 o'clock at night and I hear high-pitched whines, I'm going to sell my place. And I don't care, I'll lose some money. I can afford it. I'll get something else. But what you as a commission have to decide, is that what you want for historic districts? My property will become worth less, as will my neighbors', and so it'll become lower income. If that's what you want in historic districts, fine. I mean, maybe a nexus and put up apartment buildings. But that's the decision here. If we don't get answers about the noise and the traffic that are straightforward, we will leave, and you will have lesser-valued homes there. And I'm just a dumpy one on Dakota, right? Sure, McKinnon's nicer, but if that erodes in, they will sell, too. They want a buffer, and right now, we have a beautiful buffer. That building is fantastic. At night, it buffers all the noise from Minnesota. It's a fantastic place to be. I just want to know about the wine and the high-pitched whines. That's it. Thanks for your consideration. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak?
Hi, Sue Creel, and I have two addresses. 1700 South Minnesota is the business address. 407 West 25th Street is residential address of mine. I did a little, I work in the rehab world, and I have access to a dosimeter, so I went out and did some measuring of the decibels this weekend to see, because we weren't getting any comments last time about what the decibel readings were. Standing at the exit of the tunnel, the decibel readings averaged between 82 and 84 decibels. To reference 80 decibels, you need hearing protection, according to OSHA. At 80 decibels, you really have to raise your voice to be heard. What I noticed in the parking lot where the vacuums are is I had to yell at a friend as we were at the vacuums, or we couldn't hear each other. So just a reference there for, not a professional study, not claiming to be, but I wanted to know what the decibel levels were, so that's what they are at that point, okay? I know that you can extend a tunnel, you can put the car, the blowers further in, and that will dampen it, and I hope that's all of what has been done in the study, because again, I think, as they've stated earlier, I think it could be a good thing. Is there a possibility of no left turn onto 25th Street? 25th Street narrows considerably as it goes into the residential area. It's a little wider going to the right or to the west onto Minnesota Avenue. Because it is such a narrow street, there are times you can only get one car. Because it is such a narrow street, there are times you can only get one car down there when cars are parked on both sides, especially in the wintertime, depending on the expertise of the snow-removal people and how close they actually get to the curbs. Minnesota traffic dies down between six and six-thirty. So when we look at the traffic sound that will be added to any of the other sound, I'd like to keep that in mind, that that's an ideal time for families to be outside when they are home, kids are playing in the yards, having dinner. Wintertime, not so much, but summertime, that is a prime time for that. Again, I'm coming back to the size of the trees. We live there now, those trees, how big are they gonna be? And really, what impact are they gonna have, or are we looking at future impact only? I'm not worried about the number of trees, but the size of them for that noise dampening ability. There are actually two historic districts there, McKinnon and the Hayes Historic District is also right there. So you're butting up to two historic districts, not just one. So I'd like you guys to keep that in mind. The other thing that's not been addressed on the drawings is there is a building on the Twenty-Fifth and Minnesota side, and I don't see where that's addressed as to what will happen with that portion of the development at this time in that rendering. And is it possible that we can get the sound study and study that ourselves that was done, instead of just knowing that it was done, so that we know what those decibel levels actually are? Thank you.
Thank you, any questions from the commission? Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the audience who would like to speak?
Good evening, Michelle Madsen, fifteen hundred South Dakota Avenue. I have a couple of points I wanna make here. First thing that I have not heard from the applicant is about parking and how many employees they have, how many customers they anticipate. There's a training center, how many employees will that bring in? And will that, is there sufficient parking in the current lot for all of those cars? Or will there be spillover into the neighborhood? The second thing is, like the neighbors have also echoed regarding the noise. There, in the last meeting, there was a lot of, "I drove by, I don't think I can hear it. I've been by there, my office is next to there, I can't hear it." Let science be the guide on that. I just encourage you to do that and do your due diligence in looking at that and not going with what you think, what you feel, what you, you know, at my office, this is this way, but this is a hundred-year-old, year-old homes that we've owned and have a lot of love and respect for where we live. The third issue is traffic, traffic flow and how that will look. There's seasonal speed bumps here, I don't know what that means, to be honest. I'd like to see actual stop signs in the neighborhood. My kids, if you can't tell by my arms, my kids, we're outside a lot. We like to be outside, we're in the front yard, we're playing baseball, we're throwing the ball, we're walking our dog. I really hope that you think of those kids and the potential for traffic increases and what that would bring to the neighborhood. And last, I'd like to just acknowledge the hours. There was some confusion on what the hours were, and the city stated in theirs that they didn't have a problem with hours recommendations from the commission. I would propose that those would go in align with the daylight savings time and have them as a part of this proposal. So we have those promises. And lastly, I just wanna remind you or encourage you to just, that you're the promise-makers in this, and we're counting on you as fellow citizens to make the best promises to the people that have built their homes there and made an investment in this community. I think that, you know the science, you know what's going, if you do know that, just please share it, or when you're making those decisions, keep in mind that those kids, you don't want a kid ten years from now coming with a hearing loss because they're lived by a car wash. You don't want a car accident because of increased traffic. Just please keep those things in mind as you're reviewing your materials and making your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions from the commission? Okay, anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this item?
Hi, Marley Frye, fifteen oh-one South Dakota, also backed up right next to, on the corner there, right next to the building. I just wanna kinda echo the things that all of the neighbors have been saying, that the noise is a concern. My parents live a block away from a car wash, and when I'm at their house, I can't hear them talking to each other in the garage a block away. So having it in my backyard is very upsetting. Same thing as Jeff, we're outside and doing things, and we did purchase that because we knew we had the backyard kind of to ourselves. We don't have to worry about other neighbors on the corner, we only have one neighbor, and they're great. And, yeah, so I guess that, the noise part really concerns me. I feel like there have been, I, we also didn't get a notice about the meeting. Last Thursday, we were prepared to come to the planning commission meeting. I personally went to three separate neighbors and talked to them. They all also were planning on coming to the meeting. And then we got notification that it wasn't being addressed at this meeting, and it had been pushed back. I couldn't find any information online for that, so I emailed the planning commission. And I received an email back right away, addressing it, saying it had been pushed back, I appreciated that. They also said they would notify once they did figure out the date, and I didn't receive anything about that, we just got the notice on our door also late today. And same thing, as, you know, other people have talked about, we made an investment moving into this neighborhood. It's a historic district, when we were renovating our home, we had to follow historic rules. Couldn't put in a wood frame window, had to follow historic guidelines there and use wood frames, or sorry, metal frame, so we had to use the wood frame. So just making sure that our neighborhood is staying true to that historic feel as well. And if it is something that passes, it's probably something that we would look at moving as well. Unfortunately, like Jeff mentioned, that he could take a hit, it would be devastating for our family to take a large financial hit on not selling our home. That's all.
Okay, any questions from the commission? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Paul Cheddar. I live at three-twenty West Twenty-Fifth, at the corner of Twenty-Fifth and Dakota. Appreciate the accommodations you've all made to have a meeting tonight, and also appreciate the work that's gone into the proposal by the applicants. I, I do wanna give them some credit, they've listened to the neighbors and done what they can to address concerns. My primary issue tonight is ensuring that promises made by the applicant and the decision that you make tonight is something that we can rely on as neighbors. I think you were provided an email exchange that I had with Wade that included some additional conditions that I wanna make sure are part of your approval tonight. Included in the email, but not one of the items that Wade was willing to include as conditions, are items that were referenced in the sound study as being important to mitigate the noise pollution going into the residential neighborhood. And those two items are not depicted in what's in front of you tonight, but at least one of them, excuse me. The sound study talked about panels along the east side, and depicted panels along the east side of the exit of the car wash tunnel as deflecting noise to the south of the car wash. I'd like those to be included as conditions upon the approval tonight, if you're so inclined to approve this. Secondly, we've talked about and seen pictures of the producer for the vacuum being enclosed by a mortar structure with that opening to the east, to the west, excuse me. I'd like that to be included as a condition. Part of the problem that we have as citizens are, we rely on drawings that are depicted by the professionals. We assume that those drawings are then part of what's being adopted in this process, only to find out later that that's just a depiction, they're not obligated to draw it that way. As long as they satisfy the conditions that were adopted and the zoning requirements, they've done what they needed to do as a developer. I know of other neighborhoods in our community on the west side, there's an apartment complex that was built that was a higher density than what the neighbors were initially told. So part of this is avoiding us being misled, intentionally or unintentionally, and I don't wanna accuse any, them of any misdeeds, but those sorts of things that we look at in the professional documentation, we believe are happening. We believe that when you approve it, those things that were depicted to us and provided to us were part of that approval. So I wanna make sure that what you do approve tonight, assuming you take action, that direction includes those sort of requirements, so that as neighbors, we can be assured that the recommendations of professionals and the way the project is depicted represents what is actually gonna be put in place, so that we don't come back later asking what our, what our redress is, and we're told, "There is none, it was just a rendering, they're not, they don't have to build it that way." That's, that's a pretty frustrating prospect as a property owner. I do wanna endorse the no-left turn onto Twenty-Fifth Street, raised by Sue earlier. I can speak to the narrowing of that, that street as you go to the east. I understand the city's traffic planning and what they desire, however, Dakota Avenue as it is is a racetrack, and funneling more traffic to the east to then go south on Dakota to Twenty-Sixth Street to utilize a stoplight is gonna create a very dangerous intersection at Twenty-Fifth and Dakota. I mentioned this information a month ago. There are sixteen kids, twelve and under, within a block and a half of that corner, and within the next six months, there's gonna be ten kids, excuse me, ten kids who are five and under at that, from that intersection. So it's critical that we're protecting the neighborhood children, as well as the historic nature of the neighborhood. We hope that they fulfill the promises and are as good a neighbor as they say they would be, but I would ask that you would consider adopting specifically the conditions included in that email exchange between Wade and myself, and I can speak to those specifically. One of them is adding additional detail to that fence on the east side of the property, allowing for that reduction in height, I think that is included in the recommendation. The twelve trees somewhere on the property, the number of trees is less critical than using the trees to accomplish noise reduction, so I would instead ask you to adopt a condition that requires that they satisfy the recommendations of Johnson, the audiology expert relative to utilizing trees to reduce noise. Also, the seasonal speed bumps or other mechanism to slow traffic before it enters any of the residential areas, and then the no vacuums within forty-seven feet of the westernmost property line as discussed, as well as the acoustical, acoustical panels at the exit of the bay and the enclosure for the vacuum producer. And there's also been discussions about the location of the fans and the blowers inside the tunnel. There's no, nothing, absent you imposing a requirement, they're able to do whatever they want later and decide that economics drive where they wanna place their fans, our ears be damned. So I would ask that you please have some specificity in your approval that obligates them to find mechanisms in the placement of their equipment to minimize the noise as well, thank you.
Okay, thank you, questions from the commission? Seeing none, anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this item?
Hello, can you hear me from here? Okay, Tom Borchard, I live at sixteen oh-one South Dakota. I just had a quick statement, I've lived in my home on Dakota Avenue. This is my fourth year that I've lived there. Everyone who I know that's talked to me about this has kinda had the same concern that's been echoed behind me about the sound. When you had the photos up of the exit of the car wash tunnel, I just wanna point out that my house is the closest one to the exit tunnel of the car wash. It's also the absolute closest to the vacuum pumps as well. And I'm also the one that has the floodlights from the dealership shining straight in my backyard. So I, I, I think that my property line probably has the most exposure to the new proposed usage of this building, and I am actually in complete support of this. Pending all of the sound study and everything that's been talked about would be complied with. I know the original owners of the building personally for over fifteen years. I actually bought my home from them, they previously owned the home that I bought. After an extensive remodel, I purchased it from JBB. I knew that JBB had intentions to sell this place, and it was always a concern of mine, what would move in behind me? Most of my concerns usually revolved around late-night establishments that have patrons that may be drinking beverages. That was probably my biggest concern, could be a neighbor. To hear that a car wash company like Silver Star that appears to take great pride in their locations was gonna be my future neighbor was an incredible relief to me. I, as long as the sound concerns are addressed, and Paul detailed it way more eloquently than I ever could, so I'm skipping over that section of my notes. The only remaining concerns that I had were the fence line, which was addressed very early with them. I have a little bit of a unique concern with the fence line, because my house is on what is formerly Twenty-Fourth Street. And about once a night, there are people that are walking down my driveway to climb the fence to go over to the head shop that Freedom opened about six months back. So my recommendation that I asked for was that the fence not resemble a ladder. If you look at it right now, there's three slats, and it looks very easy to climb for my ten and twelve-year-old. So I am looking forward to that fence being replaced with the slat-style ones that will be taller to hopefully discourage people and to replace the extremely dilapidated fence that is currently there. So those are my main concerns, is the light is gonna be dropping, it should be discouraging to people, as long as the sound requirements are met, which, please go with Paul's statement on that, thank you, Paul. I am in complete support of Silver Star moving in over what a lot of the other options could have been.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the commission? Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I think, oh, yes, okay.
Ryan Tisdale, twenty-five seventy-one Southwest Lake Drive. I represent the owners, the sellers of the building, JBB Ventures, which is a subsidiary of a related entity to Vernite Motor Cars, who's owned the property for several years. When Silver Star came along, we were very excited with them as a buyer. They're a great, responsible, local business. And Vernite kinda thought it was a, they've always tried to be good neighbors. They felt like selling to Silver Star would be, would be good for the neighborhood compared to the alternative use if Silver Star does not purchase the property. And Silver Star has proven to be a good neighbor throughout the city. I have three clients who own property adjacent to Silver Star, they've never had any issues. Currently, there, on an average day, there's over two-hundred cars per day going in and out of the, the site. There's a lot of congestion on the site, it's very short on parking based on what the use is. Based on the numbers, ever, tonight for Silver Star's uses, it would be a significantly less impact on the neighborhood versus what's currently there. One thing that I've heard, heard last month, and then at the neighborhood meeting from some neighbors, is the spill-over onto some of the side streets that's been a result of the congestion of the Vernite site, which I, I have not seen any evidence that Silver Star would have that same effect on the neighborhood, just based on the density and how many people, you know, are coming and going on Silver Star compared to what's there today. Vernite's been a good neighbor here, the, several years ago, or for several years, they owned many of the houses right behind the dealership. They, in fact, owned that whole half of the street worth of houses, which they sold a few years back. Instead of selling junkers, they actually pumped a million dollars into all those houses before they sold them, trying to be a responsible neighbor. You know, many of the people tonight, you know, living in those homes. You know, many of the people tonight, you know, living in those homes. And, you know, I kind of view this as, you know, while I don't represent Silver Star in any way, I, you know, I have to think what a great marquee location for a local Sioux Falls success story. I mean, they've really built something awfully special and proven that they're responsible operators, not just in Sioux Falls, but in other markets, and to have their headquarters here in this location, in this city versus another city, I think that's fantastic for Sioux Falls. The only thing that I would ask is to remove any condition of the hours of operations. I don't feel like there's merit in this case, especially considering within close proximity on Minnesota Avenue that there are two other twenty-four-hour car washes. I feel like, you know, considering they close at seven and eight o'clock, I guess personally I don't feel that there's a need to put any undue burden of that requirement on the site.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission? Okay. Anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, I believe we, oh, come forward.
My name's Jason Madsen. I'm on fifteen hundred South Dakota Avenue. Thank you for your time. You were here about a month ago. Since this last month, I guess I have a little concern that the numbers of the volume of the traffic that they're talking about has not been readily available or presented on there. When you're talking one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and fifty cars, that's quite a bit. To me, I think if it's going to be an open meeting and a productive meeting, those numbers should be shared, as well as what they are projecting is staff and any trainings that they may have on that site. And I guess to me, I think one condition would have to be is that they're saying that on that parking lot, they can handle anything or anyone that they're going to have on that lot at any one time, that their staff in that should be parking on-site there. In the past, it hasn't. Like Marley and those guys have said, on their corner, our corner, you never got snow removal, you got nothing cleaned. And in the past meetings, someone said, "Well, you can just call the city and they'll take care of it." It's not that easy. If the plow comes through, you're screwed. I don't think it's too much to ask for us to know exactly what they project at that site. Now, I think that the numbers that they're going to, would provide are going to be higher because I think this location, and I'm not arguing location, I think it's very sustainable about the volume they're having. And it's a volume that's so high that they need for permission to go out on Twenty-Fifth Street or Twenty-third Street, and that concerns me. All their other car washes, if you go up on Sycamore, if you go out, they have one entrance and one exit, and that's off that main road. So to me, I don't see why this site would be any different than those other sites that they have. And if they have to have those sites available to them, then I guess I would question of whether this setting is relevant for them at this time. We've asked, you know, what to do on that one, on that Twenty-Fifth Street, about that building. That has not been discussed. It wasn't even discussed until the last meeting, until one of my neighbors brought it up. It was never shared tonight. Like that noise study, I looked online. I did not see that noise study on-site. I think that should be a public record and should be accessible to us as neighbors. And when, you know, it's hard to have the health department come and talk about that when we don't even, or have not even seen that study. I looked and I read on there where you have to peak, it's like eighty-five, you can only have so many per hour and that stuff. If you're kicking out one hundred and fifty cars, how are you going to get relief for those peak decibels? That's going to be, that's going to remain high, it's going to remain consistent, and that's not conducive to a neighborhood. Like Sue pointed out and the other neighbors, our houses were here long before this car wash, and the things that we brought up and the things that we've asked, I don't think are that bad, and I don't think they're outrageous. And if I, I guess if I'm representing Vernite, I would not have a problem with hours. I can understand that. But the bottom line, when it's signed and done with, they're not living in that neighborhood, and neither is the seller back here. They're all profiting. We're going to be there, we're paying taxes, and we're very diligent neighbors. We're taking care of our kids, we're helping each other with snow removal and all that. And for us to lose that because of a situation of getting approved without some conditions or some assurances, I'd have really have a lot of hesitancy. And I guess whatever conditions we have, I guess I would be more comfortable if we have those assurances and put them in today and revisit that at the next meeting, because there is some stuff that was discussed at the last meeting that we asked to be put in there, and it wasn't even mentioned in here or brought up. My understanding was that that was going to be considered and that was going to be put on there and for you guys to decide. I don't think that was an oversight on our part. I think that was an oversight on the city. And I think to be fair and to be honest, you got to lay all the cards on the table before a decision can be made. And I appreciate you. I know you guys are volunteers and that. I've been on there. It's a tough decision. But for me, if I was sitting in your position, I'd really want all the cards out on the table and see what kind of hand you're dealt before you decide what you have. I don't think there's been an honesty. I don't think there's been really a straightforward approach to this. The other concern I had is Bean said he had a meeting and he had seven people sign. We're a young neighborhood. Everyone in our neighborhood has to work. I can't take off Thursday at four o'clock to go to a meeting midday Thursday. I don't know about you, but with my employer and what's going on, I can't really say, "Hey, I need to get away from work to go to a meeting because of a neighborhood thing." I think it'd been a little more reasonable if it would have been after five o'clock, maybe six o'clock in the evening, not four o'clock in the afternoon. I think that was a way to sabotage, maybe sandbag this whole process. You suppress the participation, you probably don't get people here. And as you can see, we've got several neighbors here that have come here, that have tended here, that are taking this very seriously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak?
My name is Mitchell Irons.
Step forward a little bit if you would.
Mitchell Irons. I'm going to be moving into sixteen oh four South Dakota Avenue at the end of the month on the thirtieth. Just some concerns about traffic as well. The left turn out onto Twenty-Fifth Street, two hundred cars a day, that's my, I go down there a lot. There's cars parked on both sides of the street. A lot of times, especially this time of year, there's been a lot of, like, tree businesses and have these giant trailers. You can hardly get one car through them. I can't imagine what it is on the Twenty-third Street side, and especially on Dakota Avenue, cars fly by down there, and adding two hundred cars a day to that, it's just not optimal. I don't know how to, better way to phrase it, but, and then I'd also ask you to put yourselves in our shoes. This was a business, there was a dealership. It's not very loud. It just feels like we're being robbed of our evenings, especially in the summer, with having this there. We didn't buy this house looking forward to eating out on our patio and having this car wash there until eight o'clock at night. I think there should be some sort of restriction on hours, especially during the summer. This is one business location of theirs. They've got several others that are not that far away that they could go to if that is a problem for their customers, so, yeah, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission? Okay. Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none. I think we do have a health department of the city representative here. Maybe that person could come forward and speak to some of the concerns about noise and that kind of thing from your review of the, did you look at the sound study that was done and that kind of thing?
So, and my name is Dominic Miller. I'm an environmental health specialist with the city Sioux Falls Health Department. As far as the specifics of the study, no, I didn't, I didn't take, didn't have an opportunity to review a lot of the specifics. I'm aware of the study, and I did meet with the Silver Star group, and from what I'm seeing tonight, a lot of the things that we talked about that day is what I'm seeing here. Dropping the elevation on that exit. I don't, I don't know if there is a proposed winged wall coming off that exit sign. We did talk about that. That would help shoot any of the noise coming off them blowers straight down Minnesota Avenue. Encasing the vacuum motors with that, with that brick wall would help shoot a lot of the noise coming off that towards Minnesota Avenue. We talked about the fencing. I was happy to, happy to see that they do, they do propose eliminating the fencing that is there now, which does nothing to knock down any noise with the, with the new paneling that they're, that they're proposing would do a much better job of reducing the noise So I hope that helped answer your question.
Sure. Commission, any other additional questions beyond that? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other final comments from the audience? I'd like to go back to the, what's that? Only once, right, right. Trying to limit, make sure we have enough time. Anyone else want to speak to this? Normally, we allow the chance for the applicant to respond to some of the input, and let's hear their side of things one last time before we close the floor to public input, so Wade?
Well, once again, Wade Bean with Head Construction. So, you know, just a few things. You know, first off, the, the neighborhood meeting, you know, we did, we did hold it. It was attended by seven people. We did communicate that. I did do a certified mailing. I have receipts with me. You know, I didn't go through them. There's a hundred pages of tracking data. They're all, you know, there was ninety-seven percent, ninety-six percent positive hits. So, you know, there was, there was notification to neighbors in accordance with standards. The meeting was held at the end of the working day to accommodate staff, to accommodate consultants, to accommodate, you know, you know, try to, try to fit it in so it could fit the most people in. So I hate to exclude anybody. I had one person reach out to me about changing the meeting time, so that was it. I did provide in the letter, that I provided my personal cell phone number and my email address, so, you know, there was inability to communicate and, you know, if there was, and I did take the time to meet at least, you know, one person on-site and talk, you know, before and after the meeting with, with another, so. So, you know, we've, we've had communication, we've had fruitful communication with those that took the time to reach out through this process. So I feel like, I feel like we've done our job there. As it pertains to the sound study, the sound study was provided to the planning commission. It got put in the planning commission packet. I believe it was posted in the, in the packet for the Thursday meeting. So it's part of the public record, it's out there. So, you know, as far as providing data, providing, you know, the decibel readings, the distances that, that were requested, we've done that, so it's, it's out there. But I think the most important thing with the sound study is the zoning ordinance reads that we need to comply with sixty decibels at the property line. That's, that's the standard. So we know we can hit that. I do apologize that Chris Johnson wasn't able to be here tonight, you know, and I know it wasn't exactly easy to hear him speaking, so I do want to hit just a couple of things that he, he talked about, and I know he was kind of a little muffled on some things, but, you know, there's a reason why we're not committing to the specific sound mitigation strategy. So when it comes to the wing walls, as an example, those, in order to do them effectively, be placed in the vacated right-of-way. Okay? That vacated right-of-way is a easement for utilities. So when a street is vacated, there is a, the utility easement remains. So I would love to stand here and say, "Guys, I'll do that." I mean, and, and we will do that, but I need city engineer blessing before I can stand here and commit to it. Okay? So that's, that's just something that, that we need to figure out. We actually need to figure out where that vacuum producer enclosure is. You know, we would also like to slide that into that easement. Frankly, where we're showing our dumpster enclosure, we need that, you know, to be, we need approval to put that where we've got it located as well. So, you know, at this point in any process that comes before planning commission, things are not fully designed. I mean, we never have the capability to fully design, to commit the funds to complete design, to have all city staff review our projects. That's, that's not a practical part of what this process is. What I can tell you is we're going to meet the zoning ordinance with regard to sound, and that is sixty decibels, and we've got numerous ways to get there. So, I mean, I'm hoping that that, you know, that that, you know, and, you know, to place conditions on that. I get into, for those of you that are familiar with, you know, some design processes, there's the difference between prescriptive design and performance design. Sixty decibels at the property line is a performance standard. It's a performance standard that's measurable. It's a performance standard that is enforceable. We have the enforcement agent here with us tonight. He could step back up and speak to enforcement of that standard and how it's enforced, but that is, that is enforceable. So a prescriptive standard where we sit here and say, "Well, if you do this, 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 and this," we'd feel more comfortable. Well, I'd like to say some of that, but I need a little help before I can stand here and say I can do everything. So I hope, you know, if there are specific questions about sound, I know Chris kind of fell off the line here, but, but I can try to, I can, I can answer most of them because he and I have worked pretty intimately throughout that process. The building at Twenty-Fifth and Minnesota, we're not addressing that at this point because we don't know what it is. We know that it was added since the last planning meeting to show the exit pathway. We didn't show it, didn't show the building intentionally because it is, we don't know what it's going to be. All we know is that we want to make sure that we've got an exit pathway through that parcel and that at the time that that building needs to be built or it gets sold to somebody, that has to go through the same process. So what happens there, we'll get a chance to go through, maybe it's a permitted use, maybe it's a conditional use, maybe it's whatever, but it has to go through that process. So whatever that is, you know, I, I don't really feel like we need to address that tonight. So while we're on Twenty-Fifth Street, the, the left turn onto Twenty-Fifth Street, controlling, you know, turning movements out onto a public street, especially, you know, a neighborhood street like that. Let me just say that everything surrounding the access points to this site is with the future of Minnesota Avenue in mind. I think you were all briefed, as Josh mentioned earlier, you were all briefed by Shannon Austin on what Minnesota Avenue has become, is to become, and, you know, we, we kind of, we're aware of what that's going to be, and keeping those access points and those movements available are, are part of, part of our plan already. Business hours, you know, eight to eight and eight to seven in the winter is, are the business hours. I think we've stated that. I don't think that's a secret. The winter hours do change right around daylight savings time, but business hours for something like this are somewhat irrelevant when the sound zoning ordinance, which I think is the primary concern around the business hours. The sound zoning ordinance goes from six-thirty to ten-thirty. Business hours are well within that window. Again, we will meet the zoning ordinance. Traffic counts. Minnesota Avenue, you know, you look at traffic statistics, publicly available information, Minnesota Avenue supports twenty-five thousand cars a day. Any business up and down a lot of Minnesota Avenue is lucky to capture, you know, two to three percent of that traffic every day. A industry standard for a car wash is Uh, a s- industry standard for a car wash is three-quarter percent to one percent capture rate on traffic that goes by it. Two hundred cars a day, two hundred fifty cars a day is not, by any traffic standards, a large number. Okay? So it's a, any convenience store, any fast food joint, you know, those guys, those guys, you know, are looking for similar capture rates. We are on one of the busiest streets in Sioux Falls here. Okay? That's why we put businesses here. I think that sums up most of the things that I heard.
I think parking was another question about number of employee or customer spaces and whether they could all park onsite was another one that I recall.
Yep, so, uh, uh, corporate employees, fifteen corporate employees is what Silver Star plans to put in there. There's roughly, you know, four to five car wash employees working there at any time. If there are, uh, training events, you know, they might have twenty, twenty-five people there for, for those kind of things. Um, I'm gonna pull in that number out of my hip pocket here just a little bit, so, but, uh, but that's, that's kinda what we're looking at. And there's ample parking onsite for that kind of use.
Okay.
And, you know, we, we did talk at the neighborhood meeting about spilling out onto the side streets. You know, we're a different use than Vernite. You know, Vernite, you know, they've got a car dealership there. They park cars there, they stock cars there, they detail cars there, and they do park cars on the side streets. It's an issue today. Am I gonna stand here and say there's never gonna be a car parked on the side street again? No, I can't honestly say that, but it's not part of the business model, and we've got ample parking to support our customers and our employees.
Okay, any other questions from Commission?
Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Beam, I gotta tell you, I really appreciated your, your verbiage around performance versus the other word you were talking about in terms... Yeah, thank you. Uh, so, you, the project goes through, they get it all put together, and you get to the end game, and you're at sixty-two decibels. What's gonna happen?
We've got layers that we can add on. And we've got a laundry list that, you know, Chris was trying to get through on the, on the phone. We've got other options, you know, and he went through, you know, the fence is a one layer, the, uh, you know, we could even, there's, there's, you know, there's other equipment that, you know, we could buy. It's extremely cost prohibitive, but if we absolutely had to, we could get it. So, I mean, there, you know, there's, there's options. There's plenty of options to meet sixty decibels at the property line.
Oh, very good. I appreciate that verbiage because I doubt this is gonna happen this way just from the items you said, but try as you may, try as you might, you can't get below six, sixty or, or better. They'll pull the plug on the car wash, right?
And I would expect you to. I mean, from an enforcement standard, if we can't meet what we promised, I'd expect you to pull the plug.
Oh, very good.
Okay, other questions from the Commission? Hearing none, thank you. Uh, Jason, do you wanna come up and speak to us? Uh, we've heard a lot of different suggestions from both audience members and, uh, the owner about additional conditions beyond the ones you initially covered. I think it'd be good if you could review, you know, because we always talk about whether these are all enforceable or not, and that's a, that's a fairly distinct, uh, consideration we have to consider to make sure things are enforceable. So if you could cover that as kind of guidance for our, uh, decision.
Sure. The three that I laid out with you, I think are absolutely enforceable. Uh, the CMU wall that you can see here that's surrounding the vacuums, I think that can be a condition placed on there that they gotta surround it by a six-foot CMU wall with the opening facing. That's pretty easy to enforce. Um, the speed bumps are somewhat harder because they're gonna have to take them out when it's winter. So when does that happen? Do they take them out too early? Do we get called? What, when's too early, when's too late? So I, that one is a little more difficult for me. Um, otherwise, most of the other ones, I think Kurt asked the, the best question that, uh, I think that's what we need to, to maybe make clear. The sound study that the applicant conducted was just for them to prove that they can meet the sixty decibels at the property line that Kurt said. Uh, that's what we're enforcing. That's what the Health Department's gonna enforce. So if they do all this stuff that they're showing here, and as Kurt said, it's sixty-five at the property line, they better do a bunch more or they, they can't open. So we have that aspect of it. Chris's testimony is, here's what we need to do to meet those decibels as indicated by the Health Department, so. And then just, uh, while I was over there, I was looking up some chip trip generation stuff. Do, these are just rough numbers, so don't take them as the gospel, but they paint a pretty good picture. Just an idea, a car wash, an automated car wash generates about fourteen trips per day per every thousand square feet, okay? If this thing was, say, turned into a convenience store, a convenience store, our gas station, service station generates a hundred and eight trips per day per a thousand square feet. Uh, a grocery store would generate, uh, sorry, I had, supermarket is nine points, so that's a little bit less. A convenience store is forty-three. And then the other aspect is an office, which, a third of this building is an office, generates one trip, a little over one trip per every thousand square feet. So if you really look at this building, I, I don't know exactly, maybe it shows on here, the size of the car wash is only less than a third of it. So you take that by a thousand, how many trips that's gonna generate. And then the office for every thousand square feet essentially generates little over one trip. So, really, there could be a lot more traffic if this thing turned into, say, a supermarket, it turned into a convenience store, maybe it turned into a multi-tenant strip center. You, you could have a lot more traffic generator, uh, on this property than, than maybe what they're proposing. So I just wanted to put that in a little bit of perspective. It, you, you don't really think maybe that much about it, but convenience stores, you know, a hundred trips for every thousand square feet, so. This thing would be, if it was twenty-six thousand square foot convenience store, you do the math, that's what, twenty-six thousand trips a day? But you obviously aren't gonna have a convenience store that big. So I just wanted to put that in perspective that, yeah, two hundred trips may seem like a lot for the car, for the car wash portion. For a lot of commercial uses, that's hardly anything. So i- it's not a ton. Um, yeah, I, did I answer all the questions? I guess I...
I think so. Any other questions from Commission?
Mr. Chair, Jason, so all the what-ifs you just mentioned are permissible purposes at the existing zoning without a conditional use.
Correct. They could do a supermarket, they could do, you know, Fairway could go in here, uh, it, it probably wouldn't be a convenience store because you don't see a convenience store that big, but I could see a multi-tenant strip center going in here with a couple tenants and maybe a convenience store. Um, there could be a host of uses that could go in here without any approvals by the Planning Commission. So you could do a liquor store here without approval by the Planning Commission, you know? So it could be, could be a bunch of different things. And it could be just a car lot, too. I mean, that's an option, too. I'm not saying that that couldn't be it either, but, or it could be a large office building, which would obviously be less trips. But typically, an office use isn't gonna pay a commercial price to have an office in a commercial zoning district, so. That's probably wouldn't happen, but...
Okay. Other questions from the Commission? Seeing none, thank you, Jason. Uh, I think we'll close, uh, public input. Appreciate all the commentary and thoughts from all the citizens. Uh, we always appreciate that, and at this time, I'd entertain Commission action.
Mr. Chair, I have a question again. Uh, what, what's this item number for, for this agenda? Is it two A or is it two B?
Uh, it's two A.
Two A, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve item two A for the purposes of discussion with the conditions as recommended by staff, and I would include a condition uh, for the performance standard to be met of sixty decibels or less at the property line.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item two A with the additional stipulation uh, beyond the, uh, city's recommended list of, uh, recommendations. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, um, I, I again had to comment on, uh, Mr. Beam's portion of the testimony when he talked about the performance measure. Because as all of the testimony was going on, I was really struggling with coming up with the additional conditions in such a way that they could be measured or enforced effectively. Um, the, the idea with, uh, the different blowers and the vacuum system and, yeah, you roll out of the car wash, as I did, I, the twenty-sixth location of this particular business is the one closest to me. It seems really loud inside my car, but then I roll around the side where there's a, a playground of a private Catholic school, and even though I'm right in eye line of the, of the exit, I, I know it's there, but it's not, there's no detriment to my hearing, there's no high-pitched whining. You know it's there, but it didn't seem terribly obnoxious. You can't enforce terribly obnoxious. You can't enforce a high-pitched whine. You can't, whatever, whatever. But what we can enforce, what we can measure is the standard. And if they do what they have to do to meet that, they should be given the hurdle to meet, but not every little, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, because that may not be what's needed. I'm not a professional with that. I can listen to all the testimony, and I can do my best to come up with the, the happy medium to hold them accountable to what they say they're gonna do. But in the end, if they can meet that, that hurdle, that standard, that can be measured and, and that works for me.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion?
I'd say I'd echo what Kurt just said. I mean, I was having a problem trying to figure out how to enforce every little thing. And I think he worded it just perfect, uh, so that we could enforce that.
Okay, other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of this motion signify your, uh, accordance by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Second, Johnson.
We're adjourned. Make it a great night, Sioux Falls, and stay safe.